Okay, I'm going to reconvene a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. If everyone would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
With allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get started with public comment. So if anybody's got anything they want to begin to speak about?
Hi, Jim LaFon, 329 Osgood Street. And not so much public comment, but maybe a question from the public is I've been, as you know, following the Stevens Estate situation, a little disappointed that I don't see it on the agenda more frequently. What brought me down here tonight was I saw that there are appointments to other boards, Sustainability Committee and Council on Aging, even talk about setting up an advisory committee for the recreation complex, which is all great, but I did put my name in after, you know, complaining about potentially leasing or selling the Stevens Estate. I wanted to make sure I stepped forward to offer my services if they wanted. I know several other people have done the same. On July 12th, I put my name in on the town website to be a volunteer. Certainly, if there are better people, I have no problem, but I still see where there are still four vacancies, and I kind of question that. I think that, you know, I know my daughter's wedding is this October, and I just looked up, we booked it last August, so I think it's time. Not that we're necessarily losing all bookings, but I think that an advisory committee or whatever, you know, you want to call it, I know it had a different name before, trustees, whatever, but I think that gathering information, as has been talked about, having seven people instead of three, or five people instead of three, to go find 100 other towns that are doing the same thing and getting their, you know, estimates of what they're charging, their price sheets, whatever, could all help us be further ahead of the game. So again, I guess I would just want to encourage you to, you know, choose whoever you're going to choose, get some people, and get working on this so that we can make it a more viable operation. Thank you.
So if I could just address that, I'm going to break protocol here, I'll address that. So Jim, two meetings ago, I don't know if you were here or not, but we had appointed or asked Rosemary and Regina to look into the board. You know, the last time that board was established was 1997, so, and there was some trouble, I believe, locating the mission, the charter, and the goals of that board. So we asked two members of our board to look into that and then look at what they, you know, come back to us with a recommendation for a mission, a charter, and what the goal should be of that board and what the makeup of that board should be. So my understanding is that we'll be ready at our next meeting where they'll make those recommendations.
Great, thank you very much then.
Any other public comment? All right. So approval of the minutes from August 26, 2019. Do we have a motion?
We've got the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of August 26, 2019 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've got a couple of government reports tonight. First, we're going to get an update on the Main Street parking, I mean, Main Street lighting and project.
Parking would be good too.
Yeah, parking, well, I mean, the entire, the entire project. I saw parking lot and lighting, and I combined the two of them, I thought we could make it shorter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I'm John Vajazy, Assistant Director of Public Works/Town Engineer, and I have Jim Stanford, the Director of Public Works, here with me. As mentioned, I'm here to provide an update on the downtown utility undergrounding project along Main Street. Little background, as you guys may be aware, the town meeting voted around 2001 to allow a utility surcharge for all North Andover utility customers for the moving of the overhead wires underground and removal of the telephone poles. The project's approval was specific to the common and old center and the downtown Main Street areas. The first phase of the project, which was the old center project, was completed approximately 15 years ago. We had our initial project kickoff meeting for the downtown undergrounding utility project last year, however, our coordination progress was delayed due to the gas emergency. Our next meeting with National Grid, Verizon, Comcast, and Columbia Gas is scheduled for next Monday. That said, we do have some concerns with the timing of this project, primarily due to the funding. The utility companies can only expend the funds on the project from the surcharge. On the electric side, National Grid has many customers in North Andover and is collecting sufficient funds to begin the engineering and design. However, on the phone side, Verizon's collection of the funds is limited because a surcharge can only be applied to landlines, and a lot of the customers are doing away with their landlines because they're using cell service. As such, it may be several years before Verizon has collected sufficient funds to move forward with the project. It's our understanding that the old center project actually ran into this similar problem related to Verizon. At the time, the town was able to, the understanding I have is that the town was able to front the funding to move the project forward, and Verizon actually paid back those funds. I'm not sure, I don't have the updated numbers, but I believe Verizon has just paid off, or thereabouts, the remaining funds that was owed to the town for the first phase of the project. To further complicate the matters a little bit, this area of the undergrounding project is within the gas emergency impact restoration area. Per the settlement with the gas company, we have four years to complete the restoration and the repairs, so it's unlikely that the timing of both of these projects is going to work together. Given the disturbance of the area for both projects, we would not recommend restoring Main Street using the gas funds to just a few years later reexcavate the same area, you know, to move forward with the undergrounding project. In addition to that, we also have a downtown improvement project design that planning is currently working on right now. Ideal situation would be to perform all three of these projects as one project at the same time. With regards to the funding for the utility project at this time, we're not prepared to offer any recommendations, but it's something we've talked about, we're moving forward and working with the new town manager to develop options for the funding. We will continue to provide periodic updates on the project and as much as I can, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Yes, I had a question.
Absolutely.
Was there a, wasn't there any kind of grants or anything like that that I thought was available? I thought we talked, years ago, maybe we talked about grants that might have been available to help with the funding.
So I don't know anything about grants. I know, so Ray Santilli, as you know, was responsible for the old center. He didn't mention anything to me before, he kind of gave me all his files, he didn't mention anything about grant funding, not that it's something we can't look into, but I don't know.
I'll have to go back and look in the minutes. I thought there was some grants that were available for downtown improvement projects that would fund that type of work.
Or maybe the design one?
Well, maybe, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'll have to go back and look at it, it was a couple years ago.
These grants always seem to be more for design.
For design, yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like when you're getting grants, it's...
It's, yeah, typically for the, well, yeah, usually the piece for construction is limited. They'll have you, you know, get the funding like you indicated for the engineering and design, and then the portion you can use for construction is usually much less.
Okay.
The projected cost of what this would be, what the share of Verizon's...
Exactly, so that's...
Just all of that in the weeds?
Yeah, yeah, that's what, for us to figure that out, that's the first agenda item on the meeting scheduled for next Monday, is because from that, we can, you know, try and project where we are on schedule too, you know, where we would be, you know, how long would it take at this rate for the schedule, you know, so we could figure out when we could actually start the projects. Again, National Grid side, they're in a better position because they have more customers, they actually have sufficient funds. They likely would indicate that they could probably start the design soon. I think they have sufficient funds accrued at this point to start the engineering design, and they take the lead, is what they indicated to me, and then they lay out their utilities and then kind of share their engineering with the other utilities, and then they kind of take that and add on to that.
What is it, about 33, 34 poles? Is that pretty much coming from the Armenian Church? I know, because we hang things on those poles, and I'll be talking to you soon.
That's right, you do know, yes. You do know, so I know it's...
From the Armenian Church, I think, to Sutton Street, is it?
Yeah, so it's, yep, from Main Street all the way up to Merrimack on, along Main, excuse me, Sutton Street, along Main Street up to Merrimack, and then a portion of Water Street also.
Oh, okay.
We're going down, I think to where the lighting project ended.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're partially done.
Yes, exactly, so we're extending there also.
And you've extended it to Merrimack Street, which is the other side of St. Michael's Church?
Yes, yep.
So...
Yeah, that's what was in the original article that was approved. And then we are extending 200 feet up Waverly Road, First Street, and I believe Second Street.
Oh, what is it? Is there any benefit to maybe reducing the scope of that? I don't know.
Pause, well, I don't know...
I mean, I don't want to disappoint people who would love to have that in those areas we've just discussed, but it's just...
Right, and I don't know, since it was an article that was voted on, so I don't, I don't know if we can amend that.
Only with another town meeting vote?
Right, we'd have to put another article up, I believe, to amend it.
Is there any economic efficiency or any upside, any economies that any of these utilities gain from doing this? Or is this purely aesthetics? Are there any safety pieces?
Yeah, I don't want to say, yeah, I wouldn't say just purely aesthetics, although we believe that was the generator behind it. From the utility standpoint, I can speak a little bit to it, I worked for the town of Concord, we were actually undergrounding the entire town. Little different situation, they actually have a municipal light plant. So from an efficiency standpoint, certainly it helps with outages in that if you don't have the wires, especially in windy conditions, but again, this is such a small area, it would be tough to say that it's a, you know, that would be a, you know, a huge benefit to the town, but that's typically, so you would look, you would say that you have some efficiency in the long run by putting the wires underground. So I believe that there is some. From a cost savings, I, you know, they have to maintain so many poles, it's, you know, it's just a different means of getting the electricity or the cable or the phone. And further complicating matters too, and when you talk about the scale of the project, we believe there are about 300 properties that are impacted by it, so that's 300 easements that the utility companies will have to obtain.
Wow.
It's always very difficult when you talk about easement acquisitions, especially from the utility company's perspective. They don't have the rights that, let's say, municipality would have as far as eminent domain, not that we would ever take that, but they have to negotiate, so, you know, there's a whole host of challenges with this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you standing up here, Jim, for the senior center, or is that...
No, I think Jean's gonna...
Jean's got that one? All right.
Nope.
Yeah, I know why you would be there.
Suzanne has it.
Wow.
I knew we could pass it to somebody.
That's a quick, that's a potato.
All right, well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have the senior center parking lot discussion.
I think it was me. So it was my understanding that the board had asked me to come and sort of go through the legal options with regard to the senior center parking lot on the Surrey Street parcel. And so there are essentially three, well, I'll just go through them, right? There's the acquisition of the parcel, so an acquisition of the parcel would require a town meeting vote and appropriation, a determination of the cost or the value of that property and a town meeting vote to appropriate those funds. There's the procurement laws, and because this could be determined by the board as a unique acquisition, that would alleviate the need to go through the public bidding process. There's a, it's a unique acquisition process where you make a written determination, the parcel is unique due to the location and the purpose of it, and then that is filed, published with the central registry, and then you can go through with the acquisition. And that's your compliance with the procurement laws. You can enter into an agreement to purchase prior to that being filed with the central registry. There's also the opportunity to acquire an easement, which would, an easement is for the possession of land, right, but it's not the fee, so you don't own the entire parcel, and that's the same process, it's a town meeting appropriation, 30B, unique acquisition, and that's an acquiring a legal interest in it. And then the third, or the second or third potential is a lease, and under the statute, Chapter 40, Section 3, the Board of Selectmen have the ability to enter into a lease up to 30 years on the terms and conditions that they desire. You would still need an appropriation for that, obviously, so that would be a town meeting appropriation, a town meeting vote for that. You'd go through the same process of the procurement laws, where it's a unique acquisition, you're entering into this lease with a unique parcel that serves a unique purpose. And then really, the only sort of legal aspect, which I would never recommend, but is always out there, is a license agreement, and that's, and that's requiring no rights to the property all, it's a very permissive, it's just the land, the landowner is giving you permission to occupy, and that's sort of an at-will, so that wouldn't be appropriate for something like that. So those are your four options, it's either to acquire the fee, an easement, or lease the property. And right now, obviously, there's still ongoing negotiations with the property owner, the senior center design, I'm not a part of that, but I know that that is going on right now. And any discussion about acquiring rights in real estate is one of the exemptions under the public meeting law, or open meeting law, because it affects the town's ability to negotiate that. And so I would just recommend that we don't have any discussions with the particulars about particular person, piece of property.
So is this the, you said Surrey Street, but there was a property that was acquired in November by Minco or whatever name it's under, I'm just assuming it's Minco. Is there another property? Because that was on Sutton Street, so...
It's on the corner of... Corner of Surrey and Sutton.
Oh, Surrey and Sutton, okay, because you were saying Surrey, and I'm thinking, are we now looking for another parcel?
Oh, no, it's the, so it's the part, so you have, you've seen the senior center design, so there's the, originally, the parking and the building were going to be on that one parcel of land, and then due to design, sort of site design constrictions of trying to fit this building and the parking on this one area and all the rest of it, then it expanded so that the parking was on the Surrey/Sutton Street, and the building is on that original parcel that was intended to be donated to the town.
Is intended to be donated, but now that the discussion is to have the town lease it, or one of the...
No, so the donation parcel is the Sutton Street parcel that abuts Minco's. So Minco owns that one, we had a plan here, so it owns that one parcel where they had the application for Chapter 40B before the state, and the state issued the site eligibility letter, and so that's that one parcel there. And then the parcel next door, which is currently a two-family home...
A white house, two-family.
White house, two-family.
Acquired in November.
Acquired in November, or acquired...
Or sold.
Okay, but that went to town meeting for an acceptance of the donation by Minco, that particular parcel. And then there's a third parcel, which is on the corner of Surrey and Sutton, which as the design process took place and discussions with the developer, it was determined that that would be the appropriate parcel for parking to include in the senior center.
Totally lost it, so there's three.
So that's the parcel that then is up for lease or sale or whatever?
Yes.
So the donation still is in place? The donation hasn't changed?
Donation is still, yep, that is a donation.
It's just that the design changed that we would be, it would be, make it a better project if we used the Surrey Street lot for parking?
Yes, because, exactly, because the way that the building itself, we always had, and I haven't been a part of the design, so I'm not going to get the numbers right, so I think Jean is here or Jim is here, so they're much, probably much better at the square footage, but there was a notion initially that the senior center would sit on one corner of that one lot, and that the parking would be, you know, there was a lot of discussion of how we were going to get the 80 spaces in there, whether it would be shared, and where it would look, and how, you know, whether or not that would be functional, but then once the design process, the iterations started, and we brought on, you know, hired the architect, and then there was a determination that that really wasn't the best design for the site, and that really the senior center, as it sits now, it's much, it works much better with the design and the site, and that's why the parking was pushed over.
So when I asked the questions about this before, and I might be confusing that third parcel, that, no, actually, it was you that I asked. I was concerned about the prevailing wage, and you had suggested that we would lease it, however, we would build the parking lot, and I had questioned you about, is that a way of skirting the prevailing wage? And that I was hoping that we would get exact answers from the inspector general, attorney general, or case law or whatever, because to lease it back, and then there was talk of then the town would acquire it for a nominal fee at the end of the 20 years.
So currently, this is, there are no agreements signed, there's no, there's discussions, there's negotiations, there's been a lot of iterations of this project. This is a sort of a big, it's a public-private development, right, because there's the donation, so there's a lot of iterations, there's a lot of discussions, there has been no, there's no written agreement, there's no MOU where that we have anything specific, and as a part of probably the negotiation, there's going to be discussions about what type of, what's the, how the end product looks, what the end product looks, and at all times, we're going to be compliant with the law, I mean, that's the...
No, we have to be.
Right, right, so that's the intent, is to be compliant with the law. So I know that there was some discussion, and there was, I think everybody was surprised at what was said at the ZBA meeting the other night, that there was a terms and price of a lease, and I think that was a surprise.
It was a big surprise.
And it's caused this, and so we, I just want to, you know, there isn't, there isn't a lease sitting out there, it's within your authority, you're the negotiating authority. Presumably, the town manager keys it, you know, sort of tees it up for you and does sort of the legwork, but you're the ultimate authority on that, and so I want to make sure you all understand that that's recognized. And town meeting to acquire a parcel, obviously, it has to go to a town meeting to do that, but there can be negotiations and discussions about the project, all contingent upon town meeting approval, everybody's approval, and right now, it's just in the permitting process, so...
So it was suggested, though, that if we decide not to work out arrangement with this parcel, that the project could still go on. Is that true? Or is this now, maybe that's a question for Jean, is this, is this, we must have?
Oh, this, but...
To acquire this project in order for the numbers to work in parking and space?
Well, so there's been a design process, right, so they've, there have been a lot of iterations, the designs before the permitting boards, everything is conditioned upon the proper approvals, but that site design is the design for those, that parcel of land, those parcels of land.
To piggyback on what Selectmen's video is asking, though, do we, do we have a contingency, worst-case scenario, where for whatever reason that parcel can't be absorbed into this project?
So we, so the architect is hired to design a building and a site, and it's always known, whenever you have an architect, and this architect is familiar with it, he's going to all the permitting boards, that if you don't get the permits, or you don't get the approval at town meeting, or the Board of Selectmen, or you can't enter into the deal, then you have to sort of relook at it, and you don't pay, like, the town isn't paying the architect to do, come up with two different site plans at the same time, because that...
Because the architect, and I don't know that Suzanne is the right person to be asking these questions to, because she's really not the architect, or the, or the, or the project team, but I think, I think there was an original plan that did not include that new lot of land that was purchased, and that was when the parking was deemed to be very tight, right, and that was, so then that new parcel was acquired, and then it allowed them to...
The Sutton Street one.
This, sorry, sorry, Surrey and Sutton, Surrey and Sutton. So that allowed the design to expand and use that lot, and now, so you're right, I think it's risky, because if we have to purchase it, or we have to get into a lease, and it doesn't get a vote of town meeting, then we're kind of back to square one, and we have to, we have to put everything on the original donated parcel.
The question that we got to last week, or what I was trying to clarify, in my mind anyway, was the building itself is on land that's donated.
Yes.
The parking is on this new lot on the corner of Surrey and Sutton. If we don't come to some agreement, then we have to, we don't have to go back to the drawing board on the building necessarily, we just have to live with less parking, essentially.
If that would be allowed by, by planning, I mean, there is clearly required number associated with square footage.
But I mean, the planning board has the ability to say that they...
That would be so.
Right, so you're right, I mean, that's, that's accurate, is that the entire building is cited on that donated lot. I mean, this project is conditioned upon a number of things, a number of events.
But in that, in that case, again, worst-case scenario, where we didn't absorb that extra lot, we might not necessarily build a building with the same footprint because of substantial number, what do we have, 81 parking spaces? A substantial number of those aren't on that lot, and I guess I just...
Or I think that the other thing that we have to keep in mind here is that, because this is sort of the, the iterative process, the discussion is going on, if, there's always the possibility of, I mean, and this is speculative, but this is something to consider, right, shared parking with the developer, with Minco for the senior center, because when we initially talked about this, one of the things we were saying is the senior center is going to be used presumably mainly during the day, and presumably the housing unit is, most people are in and out during the day, so there was some discussion about that. I mean, we had, we did have a design with the, all the parking spaces in mind.
I think the thing that was the most troubling is to have this spoken about at the zoning Board of Appeals meeting, and a number of 600,000 was tossed around, perhaps plus interest, and then with speaking with you, because I was concerned about the prevailing wage and avoiding that law, and the cost, if, and then you had suggested that we would build the parking lot, which would be probably about another, over 200,000, so now we're looking at, we're pushing up almost a million-dollar project for parking. When I, when I said to you that you can't, prevailing wage, you can't, you can't have a private party say, I will build you a fire station, and you can lease it back to me, that's...
We do know that, yes, and...
So it's almost the same thing, that they bought the property, they lease it back to us for, what, 600,000 over 20 years, and in order for us to participate, what could be the only way we could do it is for us to actually build the parking lot, tear the house down and build the parking lot, and now you're looking at at least $250,000 to build a parking lot of that size on top of the 600,000. So what is frustrating, if we're pushing almost a million dollars that we never saw coming, and the project's marching on, everyone's getting excited, and their hopes are up, and then we get faced with this, is troubling.
Were we always going to build the parking lot? Oh, was that cost always folded in?
No, I don't think so.
So we were, well, so, I don't know specifically, but I don't think there was a discussion, as much as you're having, you're concerned about whether they build the parking lot on the Surrey Street, whether they would have built the parking lot on the donated parcel would be the same issue. So the issue with regard to the parking lot and the cost of the parking lot was always a discussion about 80 spaces. There was always the town, that was always a part of what the architect is designing, the parking area, so it's just, you know, it was here before, 80 spaces on a lot, and now it'll be designed and construction here, so it's still 80 spaces. And if Minco, I mean, in the case you're talking about with the prevailing wage issue, is one of the reasons why I think it's important to, that we have to consider this, is because we don't have the details... we don't have the details yet, and that's part of the negotiation, and that's why I think it's difficult, in terms of the town, putting the town's interest in the best light, and giving yourselves the best negotiating strategy and position, it's a challenging thing to have that discussion.
It is, but it's also somewhat surprising that, as we march on, and everyone's excited about the senior center, that we're faced with this, and it's a substantial amount of money from what's being, potentially, we'll use that phrase, potentially proposed, in order to get what we need from that site, and that's, that is what's troubling.
I guess, I, I guess, you, this is, this is an opportunity, and it seems like we're looking at this as something that could make the project better, and, and it seems like we're kind of getting stuck in the quagmire here a little bit. This is a plus to what we, as the town, decided we wanted to do, and have, and are working towards. So, this is a way to potentially improve the project, and really fulfill it to the best vision as the architect, and as I think we're initially seeing here. So, the fact that, it seems to me the discussion is maybe getting a little blown off-center, in the sense of, this is something that could enhance and help us bring this to a better fruition, and what I think we're trying to focus on here is, what are the different options to facilitate that? And you laid out three. So, we're aware of those three now, and what you're saying to us in reality is, we either can just forego that, and go with what we agreed with the town, or try to make it better by trying to execute one of these three avenues, none of which we have a hundred percent assurance as to what it's going to cost, or how long it's going to take, it's going to come together, right?
Yes.
And so, this is just making us aware, this is part of the process, this is an opportunity, this is really for us to take advantage of.
Right, and this is what the architect-
Follow from that question, do all three of those require an active town meeting? Because one of my concerns is that, you know, we, at a town meeting, one thing was voted on, and now we have something, a different, somewhat different project in front of us, but if we have to go back to town meeting and have that approval, then I'm kind of okay with that, because that is, again, that would be putting it in front of the, the town meeting, and, but do they have, so the land acquisition would have to go to the town meeting, right?
Yes, yeah.
If we're going to purchase it, all right, if we were going to enter it into a lease, would that have to-
Well, under thirty years, up to thirty years, you do not, yes, but I mean, if, yes.
But we still would have to go to town meeting for the budgetary piece to pay for that.
For the appropriation.
I think, stop me, I feel like the root of your frustration, Rosemary, and I share that, share that, is that this should have been part of that, and this is, this is the name that you, Suzanne, it's just, I think we all would have liked this to have been part of the conversation, and yeah, this is what lays before us, but that's where, I think it's annoying to find this out, almost by accident.
It was, but, for, for us, it was, because-
That this was the-
We got calls, what's going on, it was on Board of Appeals with this land.
I know, and, and when, when you gave me a call, Selectman Smenilian, you let me know that, I was surprised myself, I was really very surprised, because I, it was my understanding that this had been before, the design had been before the board, I know the architect had been before the board, and this site, as shown on all the drawings and everything else since day one, almost, I mean, since after the town meeting, once we got the architect on board, had always shown that other parcel, so I was very surprised at the selectmen, you weren't aware of-
Well, I think it did show the parcel, I just don't know that the lease or purchase was ever discussed.
Okay.
The process of absorbing it as part of the project, right?
Right, so, because I think that was, yeah.
The not, the not unfair hangup.
Well, and the fact that it would require a town meeting, but one way or the other, I mean, either to appropriate funds for a lease, or to buy it, is going to require a town meeting vote, and when we looked at those schematics, I don't think anyone made it clear, we would, this is what we're proposing, and this is going to require another town meeting.
But the thing that was frustrating to me, too, is we had two town, we had one in May, and we had another one in June, and that was troubling as well, that gee, if this was forthcoming, we should have had it then.
Because-
And then it went to felt like, wait a minute, as everyone, as I've said, is getting excited about the project, it looks good, and I think I can say for this whole board, we, we look forward to this project, it's just like, you're almost, felt like, we were given this, and then at the last minute, it could be a sizable sum that nobody talked about, and that's what's frustrating.
Do we, D, wait, do we know if that, that, that sum, was that included in, this might be an unfair question, D, yeah, huh, second week on the job.
One week, Phil.
I can hold this up, so, so I, I guess I just, I don't have a command of the numbers, was, this, so it was always in the, the design that was presented to the board, were the numbers as part of that, or, I mean, not only was the land assumed to be part of this project, but the actual costs associated with it were not included?
Because I think what we're hearing is that isn't even determined yet.
Exactly.
There's no, there's been no negotiations, there's been no determination on what that is.
You could, so that's part of the reason why we couldn't have gone to town meeting, because it's, it is really, this is an ongoing process, I mean, so if you think of a lot of development processes, a lot of them are all contingent bound permitting, because we know if we don't, if the permits are not granted, then everybody sort of goes back to the drawing board, and so, it's, it's a sequencing, what do you do first? You first get your architect, and he comes up with, like, the best, right, this architect that was hired for the senior center has designed a lot, if you talk to him, he's very, very knowledgeable about designing senior centers throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that is his vision and his recommendation to the town, that your best senior center you're going to get is going to be on the site, but that doesn't mean that back when town meeting, the timing of the town meeting, there was any understanding of, in order to go to town meeting, to request permission, you have to have an idea, you have to have the price, you have to have the terms, and that has not been established yet, because of the sequencing of this project.
We don't, we don't design as a board, I mean, we, we discuss ideas, and then it goes into the town staff, to come up with some really neat designs, actually, as we've seen. What's that internal process, like, where, where would this have been caught? Like, you had said that, that, you know, you know that the presentation had been made to the board, where it included that parcel as part of the whole project, but where would that have, that review have been? Like, okay, here's the idea that we want to have, what are all the boxes we need to check in order to make that idea a reality?
I think once the permitting process is completed, I think, so a lot of things are continuing.
No, but I meant, because it was presented to us, like, oh, you're going to need, like, we were told we'd have to go to town meeting and get approval to even move forward with it, but there were other moving parts that were going to require us to weigh in that, that we were alerted to, this wasn't one, so how, when would we have found out about this step in the process? Because obviously, we made, we made statements at town meeting, and it was presented, and in a way that I, I, there would certainly be some individuals that would say, like, this isn't consistent with the discussion that was had at town meeting, and so, where, again, we, we being laypeople who are elected to this board, and, you know, we jump from topic to topic as we have to, but in this case, where, where were the internal measures to make sure we were fully educated? When would, when would we have been fully educated? What's the process that should have been followed? Because we seem like, I think we all agree, we're kind of finding out what we would describe as after the fact, in a way.
Especially because the parcel was bought and was done.
I don't know if I'm the person to answer that.
No, that's, that's fair response.
I mean, I'm, I'm not that type of, I'm not the-
I think, there was a meeting back in January or February, I actually have the notes at home, I went back and reviewed them all, where, when town manager Mailer actually mentioned the word lease in one point, and then, you know, we all know the history from there, Mr. Mailer went on to become mistaken for control, and I think it was never really discussed again after that, so, it could have been, you know, there was, you know, there's a gap there, where we didn't have a, a permanent town manager, and that might have been, and there was a lot on the interim town manager's plate to get ready for town meeting and everything else, and that, I think it just was a gap, I think it fell through the, the cracks, and I think, and, not that that's right, but I think it did, I think if, you know, if circumstances were different, it would have been brought to our attention in multiple times, because I did look at all the other meetings subsequent to that, and I don't believe it was mentioned again, so I think there was, you know, there was just a, a time period where, you know, unfortunately, we didn't have a permanent town manager in place, and I think that's been, and, you know, as Attorney Egan said, you know, that, that would be, that person, that town manager's job to kind of tease that up and bring that in front of us, and that really, that position hasn't really been filled.
Except we, we did, we have them paying consulting fees to assist with some of these projects, but, and it's a substantial number, I mean, that's the other problem, I don't, it's a substantial, it's potentially, in fairness, it could be a-
We haven't had a number yet.
Well, it was mentioned at the meeting.
Yeah, but where did that come from?
It came from, it, it came from the developer, the six hundred thousand dollar.
I haven't seen it.
No, we haven't seen it, that's, that's, that's the whole thing. Well, again, I, we're certainly not saying that we're not interested in going forward with this project, I think everybody is, but we want to make sure that, that we're not paying more than we should, and having a well-run project, and I think we really need to get to the bottom of these numbers pretty quick, though. I think the seniors deserve that, this board deserves that, the town deserves that, we need to know what we're paying for and what we're getting.
Well, I think there's a ZBA meeting tomorrow night, and so, it's my understanding that they may be in position to take a vote on the project, on the variances that are requested, so, and then there's a planning board shortly thereafter, so, once we get those decisions in place, and the appeal period has been perfected, then that will be, and then once we have our permanent town manager, we can all-
Hope she's not watching tonight, we don't want to scare her.
You know, then, then we'll be able to move forward on those other issues.
So, just so I understand the process, you're saying you would, will complete this ZBA approval, will complete the, the planning board approval, and then you would continue negotiations with the developer with those plans, to figure out what to do with this corner lot, assumedly, the town manager will come to us and ask our, maybe in the executive session, our opinion on whatever the proposal's going to be, and that's sort of the process, and then, and then it would be voted on at town meeting in May, because most likely, it's going to require a town meeting vote.
Would it require, maybe Jean could answer this, that we would need to vote, vote on it earlier than that, in order to say on a proper timetable?
So, I mean, I, I would say that we, that would be the projected plan, but I think with, to be fair to the new town manager, you know, that, that's sort of an administrative and organizational aspect of it, so maybe there's going to be some changes to it, and I'm not, you know, that's not really my role to determine what the process is, in terms of the negotiation with the developer, and the architect, and everything, but you're right, to the extent that once the permits are in hand, then we'll have that discussion about the, sort of, the deal, and that will involve, obviously, the Board of Selectmen and the town meeting, and then we'll be able to move forward, but right now, it's, 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 there's no permanent hand, so, it's conditioned on one thing, and so we're doing it in a sequenced way.
But this is, I mean, we would not go out to bid until we have a final plan, and we can't really have a final plan until we have a town meeting vote, right?
Jean, are you in a position to give us some sort of a rough timeline, because we seem to keep-
Sorry, I'm just, yeah, now I'm trying to get just an understanding of the timeline.
Or, or are you not comfortable with that? If you're not comfortable with that, just say, "I'm not prepared for that," you know, I mean, that's-
I'm not prepared for that, because obviously, all these discussions have been discussed, so, for the timeline.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
Well, what we do know is, town meeting would be eight months from now, that's the one thing working backwards, right?
Unless there was a special.
Unless there was a special.
So, just, just in terms of just, you know, putting, putting a, you know, stake in the, you know, in the ground, we're looking at, that would be the time, the next scheduled town meeting would be eight months from now.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we're going to go into licensing, so, motion.
Motion to move into licensing, oh, second.
Motion, second?
All right.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, now we're licensing.
Do you need, make, is there vehicles, phones, bars? Do you need us to come up here?
You may want to wait for the chair to call you up.
Uh, well, first-
Oh, you could, you could stay.
I think, I think first thing we have is Smolak Farms, so, that's what you're here for, I assume.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm the activities and education coordinator for Smolak, my name's Tricia, and she's doing a couple of things.
Oh, okay.
I'm here to help, because this is your first time doing- Yeah, I just, I, yeah, I just got the job, so.
Well, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
All right, so the first thing we have is a request of Smolak Farms for three one-day wine and malt licenses in the tent for fall festivals from ten to five p.m. on September twenty-second, September twenty-eighth, and September twenty-ninth, so I think what we wanted to know, because these were on our schedule last time, but we wanted to have an understanding of, there was conflicting events, some said fall festival, some said, I don't know, something else that was in the, in the tent, so, yeah.
The main event tent is where all the weddings, and all corporate events, or any social events happen that are private. That is right, and that's what I spoke, Michael, today, and Ashley about, we're actually going to come up with a category, sort of states, because the main event tent is, the primary events take place underneath, right down near the event office.
That's like permanent one, with the, with the sound curtains and all that, yeah.
And then you have the barn, and then you have the tent, yeah, the farm stand, behind the farm stand, and that's where these fall festivals are.
Oh, right, that's when- Like dome thing, it's like a dome, it's a big tent.
Yeah, and that's, that's also a, it stays there year-round.
Right, okay.
It's actually the old event tent.
It's the old event tent from-
And we moved it there to do, you know, we're, we're trying to come up with different events, to keep people coming to the farm year-round.
Okay, wonderful, thank you for that clarification, we were quite confused.
Yeah, I apologize, I, it was my first day, they had me apply for liquor licenses, now it's like, well, here it goes.
All right, that's nice, the learning curve.
You know, it's like, it's an education fill out, those, those licenses.
Right, okay, so, all right, I mean, I think we all understand that now, so really, the only requirement from, you know, our fire department is to make sure your egress is not blocked, and other than that, we don't really have any, any conditions, so, unless anybody has any other questions for these guys, I think we're-
And we do have onsite security, so there was a question about a police detail, that I, I apologize, I didn't quite understand, do we still need a police detail if we have onsite security?
So, we make a vote whether or not we, and the police let us know if they require a police detail, based on the way the law, the bylaws are written, and then, we potentially would waive it if you requested a waiver, if we feel that the conditions are such that it would be fine to be waived. They actually did not require a police detail for this, so, okay.
They usually don't, they usually don't for these events, I've been doing the events now at Smolak for five to six years, it's just flown by, but, usually, it's any, this is a closed-off area, there's no traffic coming in or out, the only traffic that's coming in and out are the families going to the petting zoo, and it really is a very family-oriented event, and it's never, they're, they're just trying to produce a little bit more business, so usually, like, I'm going to show her the form that I submit, that I requested a waiver of a police detail, if there's, if they deny it, then they'll let us know whether or not there is someone available, and it's more or less just for crowd control, that they have the security, it's very, they're very efficient on how they do that.
Yeah. Okay, so, if there's no other questions, we can take a vote on this one.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as a licensing commissioner has approved the request of Smolak Farms for three one-day wine and malt licenses for fall festivals from ten a.m. to five p.m. on September twenty-second, September twenty-eighth, and September twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, do you want, maybe just give a quick plug on what those are, those fall festivals?
Sure, so, we, during apple season, which is obviously right now, for the months of September and October, we have festival out in, behind the farm stand, and people can come and go apple picking, pumpkin picking, we have a pretty large animal area, we have-
Hay rides.
I'm sorry, what?
Hay rides.
And people can come and go apple picking, pumpkin picking. We have a pretty large animal area.
Hay rides.
I'm sorry, what?
Hay rides.
We have numerous hay rides. I just hired five new drivers, so there's plenty if you want to come. We have, this year, we're trying something new. We have a carnival theme, so we have a bunch of carnival games. We're going to have pony rides. One of our employees actually owns a pony, so it, she brings in a ring and kids can ride ponies. And then this year, this is where the liquor licensing comes in. We're trying to bring more, you know, North Endover residents that don't have children, such as myself, and, you know, try and bring them into the farm. And so, we're doing the, we're doing local wine and beers, local to Massachusetts. And we do food, and we have, um, some of our young farm stand employees actually play music. So, it's really nice. It's a lot of fun.
Ice cream, sweetened.
There is like, this, last weekend, I think, the line was longer than I've ever seen it.
In their famous cider donuts?
Yes, that we ran out of.
Sounds all good.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we can take yours out of order since you're, you're here as well. So, the, we'll go, we'll skip to item C, request of butlers and bars for one-day alcohol license for staff appreciation dinner in the season end tent on October fourth from four to eight-thirty, and a waiver of the police detail. Want to say any other comments? I pretty much summed it up right there, I think.
This event has been at Smolak Farms for ten years. It's, um, it's a new company. It's touchstone closing in Escrow. It used to previously be Attorney Michael-
Lombard.
Lombard. And it's a great event. It really is. It's all with the people in their realty business that come to this event. It, they literally come in, they have one or two drinks, they eat, and they're gone. They, it really is. It's not a late event. We've never had any issues. I've never had any issues at any events, or so. It's actually a very smooth process, the way they do it, and so.
So, just to, I said this already, but it's from four to eight-thirty. So, it's not going to be late.
Actually, it's usually done by eight. I always put eight-thirty, just in case. I always do that. I always put an extra half an hour on any of my events, just to cover my-
So, and, and she was requesting a waiver of the police detail.
Will the health security be available for that event also?
Um, it's actually down under the main event tent. It's, it's an, I did request a waiver because it is a private event, and it's by invitation only. We've never had a need to have security because it, they're all professionals who are coming to this event. Like I said, they come in, they have a cocktail, they eat, they do an awards, and they actually leave. There's really no issue for crowd control or anything, because-
How many?
It's one hundred and fifty, and we have a capacity of two hundred for that tent. There's no, there's no music either. There's no, it's not, they don't-
It's not a rock dance party.
It really isn't. Just, it's, it's a very, kind of a formal event. It really is very corporate. It's his way of appreciating, saying thank you for everything you do.
For those wild and crazy realtors and lawyers.
Especially when they go to the top of the hill and roll them down.
You have approval, and that concludes the waiver of the police detail.
I'll second that.
Yep.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Do we need to come to the meeting every month? Or, I mean, every time I put it, like, I haven't been. I only, I usually come at the beginning of the season, because I submit like thirty or forty licenses.
I think it's more important that you get the stuff in early. That's the big thing.
Yeah, I was just going to say, please, if you could-
I am going to tell you, I'm, the, the people who know me, that I've been working small, I usually get them in sixty to ninety days, thirty. I mean, if I get it in, it's because I just booked the event. And I really, and I always email Suzanne and say, "Listen, this event was just booked." I get, as soon as, as soon as I get a signed contract, it's in. I immediately sign it, I get the paperwork in. So, I really do try to get things in within thirty days.
And last week, it was because we actually, the reason you're back is because we had questions about the difference with the tents.
Yes, right. I mean, I'll always come back. I have no issue, but, you know.
But there have been, there have been some weddings that have been before us within, you know, within a one week. The wedding was happening in a week, and the licensing request was here before us.
But that's, that wasn't-
That wasn't me.
That's, it's almost actually never, when that happens. So, I guess this is more a lesson for the new, new member of the Smolak team. Because I'm pretty sure in those cases, it was Ashley Palermo, who I think was the contact.
I'm going to be doing most of the licensing from now on, so rest assured, it will be done early.
Yes.
The only thing is, some, I mean, some, some couples do elope. And sometimes things do happen spontaneous as well, so.
Yeah, it, I, trust me, I know.
Well, we understand when there's the odd last-minute thing, but we would, as a blanket statement, appreciate these-
And it's a standard.
I'm quite honest with you. I mean, I try honestly to get everything in as soon as I get, as soon as I book them. If I could book them a year out, trust me, I'd be filling the application and send it in, but I-
Do you fax it in? Is that how you get it?
Actually, no, we go online to the online system, and we do it that way. And we have to put copies of our, copies of our receipts from the wholesalers I purchased my alcohol for, my tip certification, my general liability and liquor liability. It's a process. It's a lot of paperwork, and-
Yeah, well, we, we kind of see what you're doing. But I just didn't know for those last-minute things, is there a way that? But it sounds like you've got it covered. You sound like you know, you know what you need to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Especially if it's last minute.
And you guys are always so great to work with, too. I mean, honestly, if I have an issue with a license, I always send something, and I communicate the best way that I can, that I can. I mean, so.
I would just say we would request that you come if there's some new, different thing. You're putting up a new tent, you're doing some new thing, whatever.
Plus, it's great advertisement if you're doing something new.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they are trying to do a few different things at Smolak this year. You know, trying to bring business in. I mean, the, it's a great venue. I mean, it's a beautiful venue, and we have this beautiful tent for our, our big tent. I'd like to see more stuff be done, so, who knows? That's what we can work on.
And despite being outside the impacted zone, they were hit hard by that Columbia gas disaster last year as well.
What was that?
They were hit really hard as part of that Columbia gas disaster when it came time to-
Right, fall festival, beginning of that, and for three weeks, people just assumed they-
That they were closed.
Or, or they were already busy.
Except, oh, I was in a hotel, so I know.
Yeah, I know how you feel.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We have the Merrimack College?
Oh, sorry. I was thinking C, and we'd already done it. Okay, sorry. So, the last item is a request from Merrimack College for one-day entertainment license for the event at the Sakowich Center parking lot on September thirteenth from five to ten. So, this was what was on our agenda last week. We have approved the alcohol license, but we noticed on the schematic that they were going to have entertainment, and let them know that they had to apply for an entertainment license as well.
I'm going to move approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to pick it up with consent items. The first on the list is a consent item to waive permit fees for town projects. If you look in your packet, there's about nineteen million dollars' worth of town projects that are being requested to waive the permit fees. Of course, by waiving the fees, we're just saying we're not going to pay ourselves. So, that's perfectly fine. That's usually standard procedure. And why would we pay permitting fees to ourselves? So, so if, are there any questions? If you look through the list of projects, it's a pretty impressive list.
This is really kind of the first time we've put it all together in one time, one place, as opposed to doing piecemeal.
Right, true, true. And you can see in there, you know, there's a number of projects that have been listed.
Can, so some of these are coming out of revolving accounts, like the water work and sewer. So, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we charge those enterprise funds? So, that way, it frees up that money to then be part of the general fund.
Wait, say that again?
So, because, because the water department, et cetera, there, there are certain projects that fall under this that are part of an enterprise fund that we can't access for general, the general budget. So, it's not, so because there's restrictions, we're not, it's not actually, it's not like when we do downtown hall, like, you know, town hall money is town hall money. This is, these are entities where the, the dollars are tied up for very specific reasons. And with, we're not actually paying ourselves, because that's not money that's going in one handed, out the other. Those are separate accounts that are-
So, we're taking, yeah, you, what you're saying is we're taking money from the enterprise account, putting it in the general account, so as a way of using some of that. To pay for those programs.
Town services, the reason we have these fees is because town services, like our building department, is going out and performing work. And so, if they're performing work for these accounts that are governed by enterprise funds, it's not like that's money that otherwise could be used for teachers or police or fire. Yeah.
But they're, they were, one of the reasons they were set up is that not everybody gets town water or has town sewers. Some have wells and some have septic systems. So, it's the same kind of thing. It's, it's-
That's actually, it's actually, that's an argument in favor of my position.
It is. That's why I'm saying it. That's why I'm saying it.
Because these were for the improvements to that-
Right. I missed, I thought you were, that, yeah.
No, that's, that's exactly why I was saying it, because that's why it was set up that way.
There's a reason why we've been doing it this way. That's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, so do we want to table everything? Or do we want to make, do we want to continue the motion where we exclude the enterprise accounts, water, sewer accounts? I think those are the only ones. I don't see anything for the Stevens estate. Let me look closer. There is, okay, so the same, same thing with the Stevens estate.
Why don't we just table?
Yeah, I mean, they're not urgent.
Right, and then we've got it all-
Or is there anything that's urgent?
I do not believe so. I believe we could table it to the meeting on the twenty-third.
But we'll still call you back up, Dee, because this will still be under you that you'll have to talk about.
I would argue that the Stevens estate is used by all citizens of North Endover with the trails and everything else. So, that would be a reason, maybe, to exclude that.
I was honestly thinking, I mean, we could discuss, but I really was looking at the water and sewer because those are substantial accounts. People do pay fees already to have that service. And it's true that, that there are people in our community that don't utilize. They don't have to. Those departments, in theory, don't have to exist for them. And, you know, that, they shouldn't be-
That's why they were set up.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly why, to protect them, so that's an opportunity to not have to, that's an opportunity to generate general fund revenue that can be used for the greater good. Why not?
I can't answer that right now, but I will definitely get the answer.
That's okay.
So, if you come back with a recommendation, that would be great. Okay, uh, let's see. So, we're going to, have a motion to table that one? Or do we just take no action? We'll just take no action?
Motion to take no action.
Okay, so, second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is to accept a donation from Wheel Obrator in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the Trump Intervention Program of Merrimack Valley, Inc. Have a motion?
Motion to accept the ten thousand dollar donation from Wheel Obrator and send them a thank you for their generous contribution to the program.
Second.
Okay, motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have an acceptance of a donation from the north end of our youth hockey, our hockey league. I'm assuming that's the north end of the youth hockey league, north end of the youth hockey league, to the Youth and Recreation Services in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Have approval?
Second.
And any discussion? And of course, we would follow, including a letter of thank you to the north end of the youth hockey league for that donation. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a request from DPW to surplus some vehicles. Usually, when they surplus them, they've been around for a while. Well, we have a two thousand eight Chevy Equinox with eighty-seven thousand miles. We have a two thousand seven Chevy Silverado with eighty-three thousand miles. And we have a two thousand nine Chevy K twenty-five hundred with a hundred and thirty-five thousand miles. So, determine that DPW mechanics are beyond their useful life and will be traded for new vehicles. These vehicles were scheduled last funded for replacement in the fiscal year two thousand twenty, which we're in.
Second.
So, Dee, are there, are there uses for these vehicles? I always ask this because I know that in the past, we've literally surplus vehicles and other communities have taken them for-
Well, it says in the memo, these will be traded on new vehicles. So, the use is going to be, they'll be, uses are traded.
And to quote Jim, they're in Russian.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have two appointments. Larry Smith, from associate member to full member on the council of age, on aging, and Julia Ross to the Sustainability Committee. Anybody from the Appointments Subcommittee want to talk about these?
Larry came in, and he's, he stepped up, and he's waited his opportunity. And it's nice to see that, because he, we had him as an associate member before. So, this is sort of, kind of sets the table for that, for that group, so.
And if I recall, Larry had quite a record, or quite a history of volunteering in the Merrimack Valley for many different, so many different councils.
And Julia, again, just, just been involved in a lot of different community work. Somebody who's been active in the town, wanted to get involved, and had some ideas about personal, some ideas to leverage what we're already doing in the community. So, again, it's really interesting to see how many people are stepping up to the Sustainability Committee who have sort of projects or ideas, and they're, they're running with them, so, more the better.
And she's an example. She, so I guess there's been a group that have been attending these meetings for months. I met her yesterday during the farmer's market, and I was like, so you've been going, but not actually, like officially a member? And so, I guess there's, look at the list of members that they have.
Right.
There's apparently quite a much larger group that are even attending than just them, so. And they have a meeting tomorrow night, so.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Motion to appoint Larry Smith to the Council on Aging and to appoint Julia Ross to the Sustainability Committee.
And we have two motions. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, although, so again, I will say our thank you to those who volunteer and step up to serve the community. They are, again, the lifeblood of this community, and they really make this place a place, the town, a great place to live, work, and play. So, thank you for everyone who steps up and volunteers on these committees, especially the new people, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have no old business. We have new business. So, a discussion on the formation of an advisory committee for the recreation complex, recreational complex. So, as we all know, we have been working on creating a new recreation complex in North Endover. And so, I just wanted to kind of talk, like, set up a discussion, talk about the potential of setting up an advisory committee to work or to maybe set some policies or recommend some policies. Not set them, we have to do that, but to recommend some policies and procedures around the committee, around the recreational complex, and really, anything else that we'd want to have them do. So, I think part of this discussion would be to set the stage for their goals and objectives and the mission of this, of this committee and the makeup. So, that was really the intent of this discussion, to really get this on the table sooner rather than later, so.
Would you see this committee as limited in kind of scope or kind of longevity? Or do you see this potentially existing beyond the fruition of the project?
Well, I had thought of it as a committee that would advise this board on things like hours of operation, who, you know, if we were going to, who, what was going to be allowed to be done on that? You know, just overall governance of that facility. And then that advisory committee would be disbanded once that job was completed, and the policies would be put in place. I wouldn't see a reason for them to continue after that. I mean, we don't normally have boards and commissions that govern other recreation complexes. I mean, that's my thought, and that's, I mean, this is the way, why we're having this discussion. I would, I would think they would come up with, you know, we'd give them, it'd be a date certain, that we'd have a list of, and recommendations, and we would take that and hope for that.
So, we do have a standing fields committee, though, that-
A fields committee, yeah.
That talks about use of town fields and improving those uses. I don't know for the recreation complex, if we're envisioning, if a group wants to use it for a specific, like, for example, there's an amphitheater in, as part of it. I would envision we were going to have to have some control over who's using that amphitheater and when. So, I was assuming that this committee would, for example, approve, yes, seven- approve, yes, seventh grade, you can use the amphitheater to do this thing, or whatever. Like approve uses that are, need to be scheduled, because there wa- and maybe this is the existing fields committee just assumes this job, but it, it would need to be done. The, the job needs to be done of saying, there's all these field spaces, and assumedly there's some scheduling of the use of those field spaces that has to be done on a regular basis. Are we thinking that that's a committee, that's someone in town hall, or what? That has to be addressed?
Well, I, I think, you know, maybe similar to the common, the town common, when there's some, there's a group or individuals that wanna use the common. I mean, we have a policy in place that they fill out this application, and, you know, they tile up, um, trash removal, and they give us all the particulars about the event.
That's a good point.
And then they come to, and then this board has the group authority for that. So all I'm suggesting is that this committee would set those governances. So if, if they feel that, that the, ultimately, the fields committee should be the ones approving it, then okay, maybe, you know, we'll have a chance to talk about that. Or if they feel this board should be the ones approving that, then we'll have a chance to talk about that as well. So it's really, my idea of this committee was just to prepare that governance and how the, how this recreation complex would be operated, and then that would be brought and discussed in, in, in one of our meetings, and then we vote on that, or at least.
Dick, who currently?
I think I would like to keep it somewhat open-minded, because through the process, we might find, find that there is maybe a need for, for a continuation or something, but, I hear, I, I hear your point, and I particularly like the point about if they're going to bring in some sort of a special event of some sort, that they need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, but maybe through the process, they'll find that, you know, that it's just a little bit of additional oversight from this committee. I don't know.
Who controls the schedule of all the other, you know, like who, like if you-
Is it Rick?
The fields committee controls the schedule for all, all the youth athletic fields?
Well, the booster club had its own, booster club had its own schedule, or, so all the different fields. So I don't know if they, if they used to just chop off, okay, this field in the fall is used by the booster club, and then they micromanage the actual use of those time slots. But I'm not quite sure who does the overall looking.
I think that the fields committee overall says this field's used by North Andover football on these days. And then, you're right, North Andover football booster club people, micromanage it. Like there's a two-stage thing, is my understanding.
I believe, like, Rick Gorman, um, they submit it to him electronically, all different, and he has the final, kind of, this is who gets the field.
So I would-
As the chair of the fields committee?
Yes.
Right, I mean, Rick Gorman is the chair of the fields committee, I'm pretty sure.
No.
No?
Is it Rick Gorman?
Rick it. I didn't think that Rick Gorman-
I think that's part of Rick's job description.
But this is a little bigger than that, though. I mean, I think, I think that's kind of what's, kind of poking through all this a little bit, was, cause it's not just fields. You do have an amphitheater. You have other areas of this complex that could be used by community groups. You could have, almost like the common, as you were saying, Dick, almost like the common, so it, maybe this is part of setting up that mission, is, you know, let's think about this. This is bigger than what we've had, but pieces of managing the common, pieces of what we've had in managing other fields. So I, I think it all speaks to how important it really is to have a committee that works through and thinks about all the parties that are gonna be using this field and potentially how to optimize that.
I, cause I would like, I would like this committee, my vision was that they, they promulgate rules, but that, once we have the standing rules, um, on a case-by-case basis, if all of a sudden it turns out that something needs to be tweaked, we as the executive board could tweak that, and that we'd have an internal employee manage the schedule, because, um, I imagine a fields committee or a committee like this isn't meeting weekly. They're probably meeting monthly. And even among our serious boards, there are instances where, because of, I actually don't know, even amongst serious boards, there were times where they don't have a quorum, and all of a sudden that gets kicked to another month. And I guess if you're a group looking at doing an event in six weeks, I, I guess if it met the rules that this committee established, if we just had that internal person scheduling, that would be the, I guess that's how I-
Did you say serious boards?
We have some ser- we do, we have, we have-
Obviously, you're not an athlete, because you don't know what it's like to negotiate for these fields.
He's the first one to admit he's not an athlete.
Yeah, I know that, I know that.
Well, well, no, no, no. I'm, I'm talking about millions, millions of dollars of our land use boards. We have land use boards, our health boards, where for whatever reason, a quorum can't be met. That's, that's what I was referring to, is that-
You're talking about regulatory-type boards.
Well, the boards where people who are coming before you have millions of dollars' worth of contracts, and, and every community.
Just to, um, talk about what the fields usage, so on their, on the fields committee's page, it says, "The committee which is made up of representatives of all youth sport groups work on permitting, maintenance, and long-range planning. Any group or individual who would like to use town fields must apply for a permit with Rick Gorman at the youth center."
I think that's-
So it sounds like that process is in place, so maybe that's, yeah, no, I agree. So maybe that piece of it is not part of what this board recommends. Maybe it's more-
But maybe, to your point, though, I like the fact that this committee would say, for the athletic fields portion of this complex, they'll follow the fields committee process. For the, you know, open space portion, they'll come to the selectmen if they wanna reserve use of it. And you won't be able to, you know, charge money for a thing, you know, same kind of rules we have for the common, for example. And for the amphitheater, they'll do X, like the overarching governance, as you were saying, they would kind of define or make a recommendation, cause I guess we'll, we're ultimately defining it.
Well, when you think about it, there's, you know, picnic area, so do you, are we gonna make people come before us, cause they, people said, oh, let's go have a picnic?
No, no, I meant like a big, if you wanted to, like-
We can't over-regulate to the point, regulate to the point where no one gets to really enjoy it, because they didn't check in first.
Right, but the, and the governance might be, no one, you know, this is first-come, first-served space, whatever, you don't have to do anything for it. Like defining the governance-
Unless somebody books it, like for a common.
Yeah.
And then, so they would also-
Sounds like we really need people to work on that.
They would also set the overarching rules that everyone has to follow, like hours of use and-
No loitering, no-
Right, no loitering, no bringing your dog on the artificial turf, or whatever it is.
I mean, I, I would love to see as far as composition, because I'm, I as an individual am flying blind, and so I would definitely like to see people who, because they're advising us, people whose experiences professionally and personally would help, um, inform us of all the pitfalls that maybe I, I know I'm personally probably blind to. Like, I'd love to see, I mean, we got feedback from a school committee member that they'd love to see a school rep- a representative of the school committee. I think that that, me personally, I think that makes sense. Perhaps in addition, a representative or actually the athletic director, him or herself, on that committee, because, again, they're dealing with this in a, in a larger way. Um, I think that's someone from the fields committee as well. I mean, I don't think that we should just assume that, oh, well, we'll just pluck some people from the fields committee. I think that they should, because they have an actual interest long-term, I would imagine that they would pick someone who would be the best representative of, of knowing when our games, you know, what time of year, like, I mean, they're not going to say lights have to be off at 3:00 PM, because they know certain games get played at like 4:00 or 5:00, I guess. Um, and so those are, those are definitely, I guess constituency groups that I would want. I mean, I think we know we have to have, at least-
School committee, AD.
An AD or, or his or her representative.
Yeah, some AD office.
If you need someone from DPW who maintains the field, or at least could say you can't, this portion of the field you can't use right now, it's-
Well, I, I, I think somebody from town, somebody representing the interests of the municipality from a government standpoint, whether that's DPW or, we leave that to the town manager, so.
I think that's a good, yeah, that's a rep, because I was just like, like, if after a certain time, perhaps, if the, like, let's say that we did, we agreed the lights go till 9:00 PM, but maybe after 8:00 PM, if there's an employee that comes into work, there's like double time, and we're just, we're not attuned to that, but, uh, the town manager wait.
Usually, one of the coaches turns off the light, if some, that guy needs to turn off.
And they all have those, those codes to the shack over at, at Carl Thomas, but yeah.
That would be another, another governance item, like who's gonna have access to that?
A disgruntled former coach goes on and turns it on at 1:00 AM, that, about that. Yeah, I, I, I think that that's, that, that professional person from town hall representing the actual implementation piece, that would be important as well.
So that's DPW or town hall, or?
I mean, I would, I would defer to the, I would defer personally to the town manager, because I think that the town manager should, should have his or her finger on the pulse of, of what type of policies are created.
We, and we designed it to be-
Just, sorry. You just said what type of policies are created, and I just wanna step back to say, we're suggesting that this committee would recommend the policies, but the policies are ultimately the purview of either this board or the town manager, right? I mean, if, town hall, for example, whether it's open or closed at a certain time, does the town manager set that, or do we set that?
I think that-
I thought the town manager did.
He probably did, and we went along with it, or it was probably discussed, and we said, yeah, that sounds good. Like the half-day Friday and open evening hours. I, I don't know that, it was presented to us, and we went, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah. But it was on the premises, his staff, and the hours were covered, yeah.
So I mean, I guess just to clarify that this committee is not setting them, or rec- they're making recommendations.
Probably because we, we talk about that this, this complex is multi-generational. We might want someone from the senior center.
I was thinking the exact same thing. Absolutely.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I agree, oh, seems, I differentiate that from the school committee. I just can't write SC twice, so, excuse me. But the question that I have is, this is an advisory board that we're thinking, or I was thinking, gets disbanded after these recommendations come forward. So do we really need somebody from DPW for that? Do we really need somebody from the, um, AD's office for that, for an advisory board that's going to be disbanded after, um, you know, after these recommendations?
But maybe, that's what I'm saying, maybe it won't.
Well, the AD, yes, because, for example, if they're gonna set the lights, hours for lights, I would think we need to have that person's input.
A big, a big discussion we had was about girl softball.
Right.
I, I know that, I know that people who have worked for DPW, who did maintain the fields, where they always had to have input that, you know, whether it be rain, or playing in the rain has damaged the field, and then they can't play on it for a while, so I, that, that I would presume would be ongoing. But, you know, as they get into it, we might find that, no, we don't, or yes, we do.
So that, that's a, so far, we've got five, and we haven't even, two of them I would consider citizen representatives. I think some from the fields committee. Well, I'm just saying, this fields committee would be a citizen, and the senior center most likely would be a citizen, a senior mem- a, a member of the, a senior community here. Uh, DPW would be a town person, AD would be a schools person, and the school committee would be an elected official. So do we also want just some citizens on there?
I think we should have some neighborhood input.
I would say, you know, the two to three people who live within 100 feet of the property, 100 feet. I mean, that's, is that, I have, I have to put maybe 50.
I'd have to figure out what that is, but yes, generally.
Yeah, so I'd say we either do four, two or four, so we're keeping it on a number of committees. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
We got seven people. Why don't you go from seven to nine? Seven's a lot of people.
Yeah, but there's so many competing or diversified interest to the field. It's kinda hard to cut it down.
But, but two people within, within 100 feet? Again, I have to, I would have to-
100 feet's not, 100 feet is the average front yard in the library area. It's about 100, 150 feet. So that's not enough. You might wanna say a quarter mile or something like that.
That applies to me and Regina, then. We could, I mean, in turn, they don't consider us butters. I don't think that that would satisfy-
So we'll just put a butters. We can all-
Yeah, define what a butter is.
But, but, but you might only get two butters if you say 100 or 150 feet from the site.
Okay, so just say 500 feet, or butters. But we're not voting on this anyway, so we can, we need-
Yeah, we're chewing on this, yeah. So we're teasing out what, what it is that we, we would want for this. I guess I, I would want two people who, who meet the criteria of, um, residents that would be reasonably concerned regardless of whether or not they cared about sports, given their, their proximity. Um, I actually wanna measure, I guess, I think as I live, I may even live from the property line 100 feet, like, and it's just not something that, in terms of the lights-
No, you don't.
100 feet.
100 feet is right, 100 yards, 100 yards.
She's right. My backyard is like 100 feet, or 150 feet.
100 yards. And if you're on a corner lot, it's even like probably 150 feet. No, it's, if you do say 100 or 150 feet to abut the property, those will be the abutters, the direct abutters.
Not even across the street.
Yeah, exactly.
If you, across the street, abutters would have interest as well, so I think it could be.
And I don't, I wouldn't wanna-
So I would put 500 feet, or 1,000 feet, yeah.
Sounds good.
We'll, we'll come up with a number that needs to be encompassing enough.
I mean, can we just go on the assessors website and ask for butters?
Other side of the street, across 125.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had some people give comments.
On Main Street, so yeah, it's gotta be, and, and they don't necessarily touch it, but, across 125. So yeah, we gotta make it a little bit wider than-
Of course, we could always double the senior citizen to be also a person in that area, right? The seniors in that area that might want to serve one as well.
Actually, that's a good point, is that if we, if we made it broad enough, we could ax off the senior center representative, we say three residents within a certain distance, and one must be a senior. Um, or one must be-
Interpretative.
We could do that with the fields committee person, too, and that would be very targeting that exact person.
Yeah, really. Like I said, A, you're 49, and you're getting the magazines, and you're like, this has got to be a mistake.
It's by age or how you feel. Depends on the day of the week.
I remember when I got that magazine, I'm like, are they kidding? 49.
That's a good idea. I like that. I think that's a good, yeah, it's a good mix.
Yeah, it's a good rough draft that we can, like, maybe still tweak.
So, um, what do we want to do for next steps on this? We will type this up and bring it to our-
Can we, like, think about it a little bit more, based on this conversation?
Yeah, it's kind of a big decision. I agree. We should vote on it till next meeting.
You know, absolutely. I wasn't, had no intention of voting on it. I would say we would type this up, you know, if anybody has any additional thoughts, you know, let's get them in, um, to Dee, um, and we'll, you know, bring her up together.
Welcome some thoughts from the public, you know, maybe they'll come up with something that we can pull off.
So I would say we can put it on the agenda for a vote for our next meeting. All right, any other comments, questions on that, discussion? All right, next was town manager report. Dee, this is actually your first report as, as town manager.
I know, my first in my life.
What do you got for us?
So I don't really have a, a lot. Um, I do wanna thank you all for helping me through the last month. It was quite an eventful month for someone to be in an acting role, so I really appreciate all the support and the phone calls, and, you know, helping me meander through only being here for eight months, helping me meander through this role, so I really do appreciate that. Uh, we just have a few vacancies that we're working through. Um, as you know, the Director of Community and Economic Development position is open. Jean has been doing, uh, you know, all, all the kudos to her. She's been doing two jobs at the same time, but we have started interviewing so that we can queue someone up for when Melissa comes in, that she can then make a pretty quick appointment to that position, cause it is a very, very important position with everything that we have going on in the town right now.
Are the applications closed?
Yes, yes, yeah. We do have a, a good pool for that, so I'm very pleased with that pool. Um, the treasurer-collector position, we had posted that, and we are going to repost in discussion with the finance director. We'd like to get more applications, so we're going to open it up again. Um, in my professional experience, it's not uncommon that the summer is a difficult time to recruit. You have people that they're not focused on job hunting, they're focused on summer vacation and kids out of school. So we're gonna repost that in the hopes to get a more qualified, or not a more qualified, but a larger pool for her to be able to choose from.
Or just repost it today?
Uh, yes. And we are, uh, we do have a consulting firm that is helping us with the, the immediate treasury work that needs to get done on a daily basis. So, uh, we have that backup support for that issue. And that's basically it in terms of high-level managers' positions that we have open right now.
Oh, what about the, um, DPW, like, project manager?
Yes, so the project manager, they're interviewing. We have interviews scheduled for this week. Again, same thing, summer recruitment, it's difficult to schedule interviews, people are away, uh, but Jim is doing interviews for that this week, so that'll move forward. And then finally, I'm working with Melissa on posting, uh, you know, the town clerk position. Again, that's another very important position that we wanna queue it up for when, you know, she comes in and has a, has a good pool of people to look for, so that's another position that we will be posting for.
So it's good to hear you've been working with Melissa already.
Yes, yes, yes.
These things, behind the scenes.
We, I've been keeping her up to date on some things, right, yeah, some important things that we have going on, correct. And that's all I had. I look forward to going back to being your deputy.
Forward to be else happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's move to selectmen's updates, comments. Anybody?
Um, I guess to say that, um, I clearly understood why decisions were made on the trip-
I guess to say that, um, I clearly understood why decisions were made on the Triple E. I think I'm just as disappointed as I think so many other people are. But, um, people might not be aware that we lost a citizen years ago, um, many years ago, a young girl. And, uh, it wasn't worth taking the chance, especially with so many surrounding communities and horses and everything else being affected that we were, we were disappointed to do the, the Rock on Main Street. And I think under the circumstances, the head of the Merchants Group, um, along with others, came up with this, let's just move it up to the Fall Festival, uh, no, you're.
No, well, in fact, because the, the President of the Merchants Association, when he found out it was being canceled, said that that was.
An option.
Yes, okay, I said it.
Yeah, to maybe, that's, I, only because.
You clarified how I said it, yeah.
Well, only because some people, I don't, I don't necessarily know that we were always really clear about how this was being planned by a group of volunteers, and I think that some people thought it was a hundred percent inside Town Hall. When as we saw, there were some town staff people working, but there was an army of volunteers that were mobilized right away to put on this event. And so, um, I had some conversations with people just to help explain to them, because it's an example where a lot of people in this committee wear many hats, and so I think some people thought it was a merchant event and so they thought the merchants were canceling it. Some people thought, well, gee, the town canceled it, the town should put it back on, but it, as I explained, like it's.
It was all those different groups.
Yeah, all volunteering, and so, I mean, disappointed to have it be canceled, but you, to turn around and be able to hurry up and reschedule for another date for people who are doing this on the side, you know, with families and jobs, it was difficult.
And you don't know if the next weekend, there's, the Triple E threat's going to be alleviated, so you can't really just push it to the next weekend.
Exactly, that's why the decision was.
So.
Exactly, it could, it could have grown worse.
Did you see that there was actually, I'm sure this will hit close to home with Melissa, that there was a five-year-old girl diagnosed with Triple E in Sudbury, actually.
And they didn't have a positive mosquito test before that, they had one in the neighboring community. She and I spoke about that when we were deliberating the decision to cancel.
Thank you for bringing that forward, because I think people, you know, it's, I, I actually know two people, one who died and one who was affected, you know, back years ago. So it, it is real, one who died in North Andover and then one, um, my best friend in college, her sister got it in a city. And she suffered greatly from it. But I think the thing is, to those who were put out or spent money, um, we apologize. But I think the good news is, we've got a community that really wants to do great things like this. So I think it's something along these lines, whether it be, you know, National Night Out kind of thing, or, you know, that we, people really want to do these fun things, so we certainly should keep it on our radar for another event, you know, that we've already kind of tossed around a little bit, maybe we can bring that forward. But again, for those who were disappointed or, um, had already started making plans, you know, I think we all feel pretty badly that that happened, but not badly enough that we would put the public at risk, so.
It's not fun to spend six weeks hustling for an event and having it be canceled, I think that that's, I think that was important for, I'm glad that you made that point to the, the public that.
And, and to Phil's point, to underscore, the staff was very disappointed as well, because we had put in a lot of time in organizing things, working with the Merchants Association, you know, getting some of the logistics done.
Police and fire.
Police and fire, that we spent a good amount of time in a conference room hashing all of our options out. So I don't want the public to get the perception that we just set up, we're going to blame Triple E and we're just going to cancel this. That's not at all what happened, it was a lot of thought, a lot of, um, effort put into it and we knew how disappointed that everyone was going to be, because we were disappointed ourselves that we had to cancel it. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that, because many of the people in the room making that decision were there that night. Um, and so really wanted to see something positive come out of that.
They live in the neighborhood, how many of those people lived in the neighborhood?
Right, so they really did want to see a positive event, a real, um, community event come out of that. And there was a great working relationship between the Merchants Association and town staff. So I fully believe we can make something work, it's just not at this time with all these conditions that we have before us.
Yeah, and all, and all the athletic games have all been rescheduled, that's the other thing. So all the high school sports, they've, they're moving all the games to completing by six o'clock. So I guess to me, that's sort of one more confirmation if school districts universally are doing that in the Merrimack Valley and that.
Any other comments?
The Edison Market is this weekend, so there's the Farmers Market, Edison Market, all for this coming Sunday. So Fall Festival is, oh, you're right, you're right, because we're not meeting before the Fall Festival. So despite the fact that one event is canceled, Sarah Brush did an amazing job of putting together all of the events over the next eight days.
She's so fast too. Sarah Brush, it makes these announcements too, for those who don't know who that.
The social media.
Right, and she's our social lady behind the scenes, yeah.
Amazingly creative.
Okay, so a couple of things I had, so Melissa starts on nine sixteen, so our new town manager will be in the house on the sixteenth, so next Monday, so we're very excited for, for that, and, uh, I think we're all.
Little bit.
So if people see her around town or say hi and wish her the best, because, um, you know, I think she's going to be great.
And we will plan a public event for her, so the public can come and meet her. We were going to have it at six o'clock before the next selectmen's meeting, but we have to figure out when that's going to be. So keep your eyes open on the webpage for when we'll have a citizen meet and greet with Melissa.
And then the next thing I wanted to talk about was, uh, on September eleventh, of course, the commemoration of that horrible event, um, in two thousand and one. So there's going to be a ceremony here at Town Hall at nine o'clock, outside, in front of Town Hall, as there always is every nine eleven, every September eleventh, there's a ceremony here at Town Hall that starts at 9:00 AM. It's run mostly by the Fire Department and the, Fire and Police, I should say. And, uh, it's a very solemn event, and if anybody has a chance to come down and, and, um, attend, I think it would always be very welcome and very supportive of our first responders. So nine o'clock on nine eleven, right here. Anything else? Okay, so the, our next meeting is September twenty-third, but I'm not going to be available on that date. So I, you know, asked the board's indulgence of maybe changing that date, either to the thirtieth or to a date later in that week. I could, I'll, I'll be back on the twenty-fifth, I could do the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth. I really don't want to miss a meeting, I think we, I especially don't want to miss, you know, what we're going to be talking about, Stevens Estate and everything, so we can either do a date later in that week or we can do the thirtieth on the following Monday.
I think this board, out of collegiality towards one another, we always try to accommodate someone who can't make a meeting and it's a really good practice.
And this time I, I, um, tell a presence, it is not an option.
Yeah.
So I will.
Oh, well, you'll have to tell us why.
Well, I just, I'll, I'll be out of the country.
No, you're not going to, you're not now.
It's okay.
The time difference would be.
Yeah, so, um, I would ask, you know, maybe people can check their calendars right now and we can set the date, or if you want a chance to think about it, um, I would suggest we can either, like I said, we can either do it later in the week, the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth.
Can we do a, um, an email polling, that, so we have time to kind of check it, but.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we need, we need to check on Dee is if there's anything pressing that we need to have.
Yeah, we check them.
We could also meet on the sixteenth and we could welcome, um, Melissa with a selectmen's meeting a week from today. I don't know if.
Will that be a little overwhelming for her to think, welcome aboard and we're going to have a meeting too?
I think she can handle it.
I think she can, you know, I, I do agree with that.
The only question I would have is do we have agenda items that we need to, we'd have to get all the agenda items together.
We just got to work hard and, you know, we've got some stuff to turn over, but why not?
Deceptism by fire.
Yeah, so the sixteenth.
Don't say by fire.
Sixteenth, seventeenth, I, I'm also a little bit on the seventeenth, no, I'm not a little bit on the seventeenth. So the sixteenth or after the twenty-third, twenty-fourth.
So why not, I mean, we could do, we could always kick it to the thirtieth. I just know Monday, Monday nights typically, I always keep open and funnel everything else to not Monday nights.
Thirtieth works for me.
Thirtieth works for me.
Unless that, waiting, does waiting a week, then in your mind is it?
I, I can check with Lyra, but I don't believe that we have anything pressing.
Okay, if you could do that, and then that way we can decide on the date.
Yeah, absolutely.
So right now, tentatively, we'll do the thirtieth. And if there's anything pressing that we need to get to before that, we'll, we'll revisit the date.
Okay.
Uh, that'll give Melissa two weeks to get acclimated and, um.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right. Okay, um, so I'll hear most to adjourn.
Most to adjourn.
Oh, wait, one moment.
Oops, sorry.
I did get a text, it's Rosh Hashanah, the thirtieth.
The thirtieth, okay.
That's not good.
So that's a holiday, so we will change that, so we can go back, so we can do October first.
We can always do a Tuesday too, it doesn't have to be a Monday.
The sixteenth or the twenty-sixth? Sixteenth is the Monday before, a week from today.
Yeah.
I can't do the twenty-fifth, so I'm asking if we would, if we go the following week, if we could do the twenty-sixth.
Which is a Tuesday.
Which is a Thursday.
A Thursday.
Which is a Thursday.
Like, he's, the twenty-third is the Monday, the Thursday is the twenty-sixth.
Board of Health is here, in this room, they're scheduled to be here on that day, for the Health meeting at seven.
So what about the sixteenth?
Nothing, it's here.
So Rosemary, do you think, I mean, I feel like we made good progress in our discussion about the Stevens Estate Committee. If we met one more time this week, then I think we'd be ready to have a discussion on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, and it's just, and it is just a discussion.
It's a discussion, we don't have to have it finalized, because we need everyone else's input.
Shouldn't, yeah. Yeah, we should wait.
So we can be on the sixteenth?
Yeah, I could do the sixteenth. I mean, do we want to do that to Melissa?
Why not?
Yeah.
She's not going to be expected to necessarily answer any questions, so it's actually probably great, until one time she can observe a meeting in person.
Yeah, yeah.
She'll do what I just did, I'll get back to you.
Well, again, maybe a polling of all the parties, we should see, and see what, but leaned, it looks like we're leaning towards the sixteenth, but yeah.
I would appreciate it. Okay, so, um.
And just to, just to reiterate, the other thing that you had wanted was a vote on the Recreation Committee, so do you think we'll push that one back? Do we want more time to think about that before we take a vote? Will anyone need more than a week?
I think I, I would be okay in a week.
Yeah, I think I would too.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, anything else? All right, the most to adjourn, oh, we are ready, most to adjourn, second.
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 All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right, thank you.